Good evening and welcome to the City Council's Study Session. Today is Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, and it is 5:01 PM. City Clerk Assistant, please call roll.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Jenaway?
Here.
Councilmember Johns?
Present.
Councilmember Winstead?
Present.
Mayor Protem Otto?
Here.
Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Now, I would like to invite Councilmember Johns to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. We will now move on to public comments. Any person wishing to address the City Council is respectfully asked to complete and present a gold color request to speak for. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the entry door of Council Chambers. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each person to speak. This is a time for the public to share comments with the City Council. The Brown Act does not allow City Council to respond to speakers at the meeting. However, City staff will follow up and respond to questions or provide information needed. Speakers will be called in order from the request to speak forms. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Assistant, are there any request to speak forms?
No, Mayor. There are none.
Okay. Public comments are now closed. We will now move on to our study session item. The item is the Proposed Objective Development and Design Standards for Multifamily and Mixed-Use Residential Projects that will qualify for streamlined ministerial review under state law. Community Development Director Ordunia, will you please introduce this item?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Contract Planner Stephanie Tomano will be providing the presentation for this item.
Good evening, Mayor Jennings and members of the City Council. Okay? Can everybody see my presentation? Okay? Great. In recent years, the State of California has passed a series of housing bills. The overall goal of these laws has been to build more housing. And that has been accomplished in part by state laws aimed at reducing regulatory barriers to housing production and streamlining reviews for qualifying housing developments. These laws have impacted entitlement processes by limiting how cities can review certain projects. So, for example, a new housing project in Laguna Niguel would typically require Planning Commission approval as well as a public hearing. So, under state law, if a project meets certain criteria, the applicant is eligible to go through a ministerial review only, which is an administrative staff-level approval. But as part of that staff review, the state does allow for cities to review projects for compliance with objective design standards. However, the current design guidelines under the municipal code are more qualitative in nature. They involve a certain degree of interpretation and subjective judgment. The existing zoning code would not meet the state's standard of objectivity. So, the city has undertaken an effort to prepare objective design standards in compliance with state law. The draft objective standards would apply to both multifamily and mixed-use residential development, so that could include apartments or townhomes. These standards would only apply if the state says that a project can only be reviewed against objective standards. So what exactly does that mean? Overall, it applies to a relatively limited window of potential projects. Now, this work effort was undertaken with several state housing laws in mind. Because state law is constantly changing and because the city zoning code would be in effect for years to come, staff wanted to build in enough flexibility to account for future changes. So it was intentionally written to be broad. It applies to all projects that qualify for streamlined ministerial review under state law. And this was done so that the zoning code could address future changes by the state, which could further expand the types of projects eligible for streamlined review. So to be considered a qualifying project, the state criteria generally varies, but overall, most of those projects have some kind of affordability component. Now, the purpose of today's study session is to introduce the Draft Objective Development and Design Standards Manual, which we'll simply refer to as "The Manual." The manual would be incorporated by reference into the zoning code via a zoning code amendment, which will be presented at a future City Council public hearing. Now, the manual was created using multiple resources. The primary base of the manual comes from a document commissioned by the Orange County Council of Governments, otherwise known as OCOG. And pictured on that top image, the toolkit, it was developed by a well-known urban design and planning firm, and it contains a variety of model standards, which was really gathered from looking at cities all across Orange County. And the toolkit was specifically designed to be modular, so it was intended to allow each city to customize the template to better fit their specific needs. Staff took this toolkit, and they further customized it by incorporating best practices from other cities all across throughout the state. So, for example, staff looked at similar manuals from the city of Carlsbad and Temecula, and both documents that were used as a reference point were also prepared by consulting firms specializing in urban design. Overall, the manual is a result of combining multiple resources and best practices while leveraging the department's historic and institutional knowledge of Laguna Niguel. And this approach was significantly more cost-effective while still allowing the city to customize the manual to fit the community's unique character and overall aesthetics. The proposed manual would establish objective design review standards for certain projects. Design standards are considered objective if they are measurable and verifiable and involve no subjective judgment by a city official. Overall, the manual, it's broken up into three different sections, and this is my best attempt to summarize your 60-page attachment. The first two sections, it was based off of the OCOG toolkit and best practices from other cities. And any numerical standards that you see within the manual, such as the maximum number of building stories, it was customized to fit Laguna Niguel. And a bulk of the manual, it's dedicated to architectural style standards. So this section contains five different styles. You'll see them listed here: Spanish Colonial Revival, Craftsman, Tuscan, Farmhouse Ranch, and Modern. And these five styles, they all currently exist in Laguna Niguel today. This section is intended to provide applicants with a menu of options. Overall, the intent of the manual is to promote the construction of new housing and to further the city's goals in promoting development projects that feature elevated design and architecture. The proposed standards provide clear guidance for project applicants without being overly restrictive or dictating a one-size-fits-all design. This manual would only apply to certain residential projects that qualify for streamlined ministerial review under state law. So essentially, what that means is that developers with an eligible project, they still have two options. They can design their projects in compliance with the manual and qualify for a streamlined administrative review, or they have a second option, which is they can continue to go through the city's standard discretionary review process, which does offer additional design flexibility since projects can be reviewed on a case-by-case basis by staff and the Planning Commission. Because the manual requires an amendment to the zoning code, the Planning Commission, as an advisory body to the City Council, they first considered the manual at a publicly noticed hearing on October 10th. The Planning Commission adopted a resolution which included several components. First, they requested staff to make two minor changes to the manual. Second, they directed staff to review and assess whether any modifications were needed in response to a public comment letter that was received shortly before the hearing. And third, they recommended the City Council approve the zoning code amendment and determine the project is not subject to CEQA. And this last item will be presented in greater detail at the upcoming City Council public hearing. The revised manual, which is provided as Attachment A, includes both edits recommended by the commission and those made in response to the comment letter. Staff worked very closely with the city attorney's office to ensure the proposed standards are objective and clear. So to wrap up staff's presentation, the purpose of tonight's study session is to provide the City Council with an early opportunity to review the proposed manual, receive any clarification requested, and to provide guidance to staff. Additionally, tonight's meeting provides an additional opportunity for the public to review the draft manual and to provide public comments. Staff recommends that the City Council provide direction and input to staff and to schedule the public hearing during the next regularly scheduled City Council meeting, which will be held on November 7th. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. Do we have any questions? Okay. Councilmember Jenaway?
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Tomano. Did I say that right?
Tomayno.
Tomano.
Very close.
Okay. Well, people mispronounce my name all the time, so. Thank you for that presentation. That was an excellent presentation. Answered a lot of my questions. So if I understand this correctly, this manual is only for multifamily and mixed-use housing, correct?
That is correct, but I don't want to misspeak, so I'm going to defer this question to our city attorney.
No. Thank you, Stephanie. That's right, council member. Your code now has a little fork in the road where design guidelines apply to attached housing, and this will be an overlay on that fork in the designer who wrote. So it's attached and multifamily housing.
Okay. Thank you.
And only a subset of that, as Stephanie indicated.
I really enjoyed learning about the different architectural styles. Are those the only styles allowed in our city? Or are those the only styles that would be allowed under this ministerial approval? Can you talk about that at all? Like, if somebody wanted to build mixed-use or multifamily in an architectural style that is not mentioned in this manual, would they be able to do that? Or is that a different process?
Thank you. I'll go ahead and field that. So it's probably worth emphasizing, this is really a finite road that would only be applicable for someone who's looking to forego the traditional discretionary process to Planning Commission. So I think that's worth emphasizing. So it's only those projects that are looking for that streamlined option. And so if you are looking for that streamlined option, you are subject to these objective standards, which is what the state dictates. Alternatively, everyone would be afforded the same flexibility of going through the traditional Planning Commission route for review, where they could introduce other design styles, as long as it was consistent with the city's design guidelines, which are subjective, but do provide for a more eclectic mix of architectural styles.
Understood. Okay. So if somebody wanted to build a multifamily or mixed-use residential property and have it streamlined with this ministerial approval, they would have to fall within one of these architectural styles. But if they want to build a different architectural style, they have to go through the discretionary process.
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
Great question. Any additional questions? Okay. How about comments? Okay. Mayor Protem Otto?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you to staff for their work on this. This was really good for me to go through because it started me thinking about, again, Laguna Niguel, and this is kind of a drum I've beat before about our identity. What is our identity here in Laguna Niguel? When we put up banners in the city, when we do new projects, you know, what is our style and who are we? And I always like to go back to history. I was able to read Ted Wells' book ahead of the general plan, and there's some really great things here that talk about who we are, and I think that's why history is really important. Who are we and how did we start? And a lot of Laguna Niguel started with this kind of modern mid-century down, which is now Monarch Beach. This book goes through some of the native plants and landscaping, use of native plants and things like that. And so some of this is addressed in this design standards. I think it would be great to do a design standard for the whole city. I think that would speak to our identity. When you go to San Juan, you see, you know what their identity is. It's their mission. When you come into Laguna Niguel, you're faced with some different styles. And I think if we give some direction for all of our development, we will have more community, because we will be a tighter-knit look and we'll have that uniformity. And so things like doing a design guideline for all of our development, things like wrapping the utility boxes, they do that in Dana Point. What is our theme? What would our theme be? You know? Kind of work through that at some point and figure out what that is. And so I think some of those things are really important to our identity and to our community. There's even a logo in here, an old logo in here that you'll see that's really cool, and I think we should incorporate that into even some of our general plan stuff, even if it's just to put on the front of the general plan document. So I think, you know, having served on a county historic preservation board, I love going back to history and thinking about who are we, and I think that's important. So that's on, you know, what I feel for our whole city and what I think should be done. With regard to this document, you know, and it's interesting you brought up the styles. So I feel like we should narrow the styles, and that would help with our identity, because then we wouldn't be kind of all over the place. You know, we would be maybe a few different styles instead of five styles. So if I were to suggest some styles for the whole city, I would suggest Craftsman, Modern, Farmhouse Ranch, and Modern. Modern Farmhouse Ranch is being displayed throughout the city. City Center is doing that. Modern, kind of Modern Farmhouse is kind of this building a little bit, and the Community Center. Craftsman is like the new Griffith Senior Center, and it's just a great style. So I feel like we should narrow that for our whole city, and I feel like we should narrow it for this document, too. This document is such a little narrow sliver of people that might do this, that I'd be okay if you just had one style or two styles here. So those are my comments on the styles. Also on this document, let me go back to my broader topic, because I skipped something. With regard to design standards for the whole city, I think we should update our landscaping guidelines, mostly because they haven't been updated. There's a lot of high-water plants on there, and we could bring it up, we could kind of blend that with the fire, kind of the fire science that's come out, new fire science on what plants would be good. So anyway, that's a side note, so I'm taking the liberty to mention that now. But back to this document, and then I just have a word change, a minor word thing on Page five of the book. Okay. "The following off-site generators of pedestrian movement shall be identified and shown to connect." I'd rather just, instead of shown to connect, we want all of our development to connect to existing sidewalks and routes of travel, whether it's pedestrian or road or what have you. So I would say "shall be connected via a sidewalk." And I think that's just a little bit more direct language. But those are my general comments, and I'm happy to discuss further.
Thank you very much. Do we have more comments? Okay.
Do you have one question? On the one you just mentioned, the 2.2G, can you say again what your edit?
Absolutely. So "The following off-site generators of pedestrian movement shall be identified and connected," I guess would be the right language, because we've already got "shall" in there. "Shall be identified and connected via a sidewalk." Does that make sense? Because "shown to," it sounds like it's going to be written somewhere.
May I ask a question to that, to staff? Is that a possibility?
Sure. I think that's just a more succinct way to state what the objective is.
Great.
I agree.
It's the same objective, it just is a little bit clearly written. I just like it being more direct.
That's great.
Fine with me.
Cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Winstead?
Yeah. particularly since it's a nod to our Spanish heritage in the city. I think it would make sense to include that as a design option as well. It's nice to go through other cities to see all the great architecture that they have, and it was definitely educational for me to learn the different styles of architecture. But yeah, we have a lot of Spanish colonial in the city already, but I think to exclude that as an option, I think, again, we're just kind of overlooking the history of the city. And I know it's not part of this, but I do agree with you on updating the landscape guidelines.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Johns? Any comments?
My only comment is that my wife doesn't let me design anything, so I'm going to keep my hands off of this. I concur with whatever you guys say on this matter. I've read the entire material. I don't have a problem with the eclectic styles that are here, as long as it stays within neighborhood and areas, keep them consistent within there. You don't want a ranch with a Spanish and with a modern. That's the only concern I would have out of these styles. But as far as what we have, I have no problem with the way it's written and what we have here in this example for us.
Councilmember Jenaway?
I do have a question with regard to our discussion on architectural designs. I know in putting together this document, staff looked at a number of other cities and kind of put together best practices. Other cities and their manuals, approximately how many different architectural designs do they have, if they do have them?
So I would say from the majority of the design guidelines or standards or manuals that we reference, I would say oftentimes they add more. So for OCOG, which was really the genesis of this effort, which was, as Stephanie mentioned, was the product of working with the design professionals in OCOG, there were more. So they had like Victorian, I think there was Cape Cod, some eastern, more eastern or east coast architectural styles. So those just aren't very representative of Laguna Niguel. So we thought, what were the prevailing designs that you're going to find in our community to establish a baseline? Not necessarily opining whether we feel that that should continue or not, but those are the prevailing styles you will see in Laguna Niguel.
Okay. And Councilmember Johns mentioned a scenario where you may have one architectural design, let's say Tuscan, 10 feet away from a modern architectural design. They clearly clash. Is there a way that we can pump the brakes on having those clashing architectural styles right next to each other?
Well, historically, it hasn't been problematic because of the discretionary review process. So we get to curate that and making sure that we're taking into consideration compatibility. And so there have been instances where we're looking for maybe subtleties, where you're having some, you're drawing some of the design features of one project to the next. City Center was mentioned. City Center is going to have a different architectural style than City Hall. But we did look at paint palettes. City Hall has some stacked stone features. So where do we borrow from that so that it feels not the same, but at least compatible, and that they kind of live together cohesively? And a lot of times, that can also be accomplished with landscaping, making sure you get consistency with your landscape theme. So as it pertains to this discretionary review process, it works, but some people may feel, I don't necessarily want to have that leap. I'll give you an example over at the Whole Foods Shopping Center. So that was previously a Mediterranean design. It was remodeled to something much more contemporary. And that is nestled next to the Promenade Shopping Center, which is a Spanish colonial design. And so it does occur in the community. Some may feel that that is just providing individual property owners those options of deciding what they feel is most appropriate. I think for staff, one of our major focuses has always been just on quality. And so that has always been, I think, our primary interest. And then even when you look at the gateway. So you have some projects off of Cabot Road that are more distinctly modern, and then off of Forbes Road, you have some that introduce some pitch roof elements and have some elements of a Tuscan or Mediterranean design and modern, and that's kind of blended together. So we're talking about something that's highly subjective and taste-driven. So I'm sorry if that was a little bit too convoluted of a response to your question.
Councilmember, if I can chime in, through the typical discretionary process, the issue raised by Councilmember Johns is certainly something that we would be taking into account. With this manual, we cannot. So if that is a concern, the best way I think that you can address that is to limit the number of styles that are permitted in the manual. It doesn't mean that people can't opt for the traditional discretionary route, which gives us more control over addressing those compatibility issues. But with regard to this very narrow option that the state is providing, it would certainly limit their options and provide more predictability for the city.
Understood.
Mayor Protem Otto?
I think that's what I was picturing. So Modern Farmhouse, I really like the Modern Farmhouse Ranch thing that is kind of the new revival here in Laguna Niguel. If you pick something that kind of matches with other things, then you're not going to be in that situation for this manual, you know? So I guess I would just back up that comment, and that's why I kind of like limiting this, because you don't know, I guess we don't know where things are going to go. And I just have a question for staff. Speak to me about a community, without putting you on the spot, speak to me about, you know, what are the benefits of having a more identified kind of narrow style? I mean, what are the differences there for residents? For, I mean, can you speak to that a little bit about narrowing the styles down and whether it be here or otherwise?
Well, I guess locally, you could look at San Clemente, which I think is committed to a Spanish colonial design overwhelmingly outside of probably maybe Toledo. Santa Barbara is another example in California where they are committed to that one style. So I think it does provide a community identity. Again, this is so subjective. Some may say that that is constraining individual property owners from what they feel is going to yield the best project. I know, bringing it back again to City Center, initially, I think there were some sentiments in the community that were more comfortable with the Spanish or Mediterranean design, and they felt that that was not consistent with market demand and for them to be successful. And so that was something where, again, I think our focus is delivering on a quality design, and I think they did an exceptional job at executing on quality, even though it does depart from maybe the more conventional design of City Hall.
Mayor Protem, I hear what you're saying. My concern is if we limit that, will other residents that have maybe the Tuscan home feel isolated or not part of the city, since they're already, like my, where I live, I live in little chateaus. They look like little chateaus. There's nothing like that anywhere. And I know that's part of the charm, is that there's differences. Right now, Craftsman, Modern, and Farmhouse Ranch are so popular, but what happens when that popularity changes? And then we limit our styles. Do we come back and modify our policy or our manual? Which is fine, we can, but I just, my concern is like limiting that and not But I just, my concern is like limiting that and not filling the connection with everybody in the community. But I understand like creating a voice and this is who we are and this is our history and I understand that. But we have all these other mixes in play, too. And I don't want people to feel isolated or not that they're part of the community as well because we're no longer accepting that as a landscape for people to look at or homes to be built.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add a, just a quick clarification for the council. Just want to make sure that you're all aware this does not affect our traditional single-family neighborhoods. So when you're building your home, you can do whatever you want to do. Always has been that way, always will be. This is, think more of your, your commercial areas. You're more commonly accessible to the general public areas. And I think, so the question I think before the council would be, do you feel that you would like those areas to have more of a theme? Or are you comfortable with the current more eclectic style? South Orange County is, is pretty consistent throughout. If you don't mind being part of South Orange County and indistinguishable from Laguna Hills and Lake Forest and Mission Viejo, then the way that we've been going is the way to continue going. If you would like to have more of a distinct identity, San Juan, for example, as John mentioned, San Clemente, San Juan has a mission style. There are things that coastal cities do at times to distinguish themselves. So that is something that could be considered. I think a secondary question is whether that is accomplished as part of this document or as part of a follow-up effort by staff to adjust, address our design guidelines generally. And we welcome any and all feedback. So if you're speaking more globally, just generally, you would like to see this, this common design theme, that's great feedback for us as staff. In terms of this manual, that may or may not be the case depending on your particular goals for this very narrow set. But just a couple distinctions wanted to remind you of and any input you have, again, we're happy to receive it.
I have a procedural question. Are we being asked tonight to finalize these architectural designs in the document? Or can we come back to this at the next meeting when we're voting on this and make decisions at that point?
You would have the option to make those changes. It's, especially if you're talking about removing styles, that's a very easy thing to do at the public hearing. It's just eliminating a few pages from the document.
And just to tell you where my head's at on this, I don't know if I'd want to remove any yet, but I'm kind of ruminating on it because I see other cities in the county, like when I drive through, I'm not going to name the cities. But I see other cities when they have one particular architectural style and everything is modern. It just looks kind of cold and isolated and, well, just not home. So I do want to spend a little bit more time looking through these styles and seeing if we want to remove any of the less desirable styles from the streamlined process. So, but I'm not there yet.
Hold on one sec. City Manager Letourneau, did you have a comment?
Oh, I was just going to say the purpose of the study session was to delve into this deeply, give you time to think about it before we came to the public hearing. So we're just looking for general direction. If there's something that a majority of you don't like at all or you don't want to see in the staff report when it comes forward, let us know that tonight. But otherwise, you do have time.
Great. Mayor Protem Otto.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. I am one of those people who has a Tuscan style. I, I hear what you're saying, but we do have enough of it that it's great, that we do have those differences already. And those homes aren't going anywhere, right? Those homes aren't going anywhere. So I think I'm, I don't want, there are certain places, again, I won't say them. And yes, like you can get lost in a place that all looks the same, right? You don't want everything to look the same. But I would like to see a little bit more consistency in Laguna Niguel. And because we're already developed and we were maxed out, it's just going to be a few projects. If we can bring in a little bit of consistency into those projects, then you can see an identity, but you still have that unique, you know, we're not repping up a whole housing development, right? So I guess I'm trying to go for, in my mind, more identity and more consistency, but not completely all the same. We don't want to do that. I don't think that would be great. So those, that's kind of my thoughts on that.
I understand. That makes a lot of sense. Councilmember Winstead.
Yeah. I was wondering, and I know we're in the kind of discussion, not really the asking questions, but I have a question for staff. So one thing that I noticed concerning parking and that I noticed was absent is it didn't specify spaces per bedroom. Is that intentional?
It was. So in the early chapter of the manual, it references the zoning code for anything where this, this is silent. And so there are times where we're updating and refining our parking standards to kind of right-size. And so that lives within a subset of our zoning code. And so this document refers you, anywhere where this document is silent, it also refers you to the zoning code for applicable standards.
Okay. And that zoning code, that's our municipal code?
Correct.
That we just update as needed? And then it would be reflected just by reference through this document?
That's correct. And there is standards based on bedroom count already in our code.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. Councilmember Johns.
Two things. One is when reading through this, it talks about three stories. Have we taken into consideration the views that could be blocked? Or is that in, because in some of the places that it can go as high as three stories and then there's a separation of how many feet between each, the next building based on whether it's one-story, two-story, three-story? If I'm reading, if I read that correct? Am I correct on that?
Yeah, you're correct. And so some of this is predicated on just existing height standards in our zoning code, which are 35 feet, which gets you basically three stories. And then also state law. And state law allows for, depending on which law you're looking to exercise, in some instances, you can go taller. The city does not have a view protection ordinance and we wouldn't be able to institute it anyways if someone is exercising the state preemptions. So what we've intended to do with this manual is at least be sensitive to maybe lower-scale development that may be adjoining a property. So that's why you'll see that there's step backs and massing reductions the taller you go, so that hopefully you do get some compatibility if you did have a situation where you're going from something that's very low-scale to something that's a bit taller.
Okay. And my other point is on the identity. I think that we have a problem with identity here because our seal and our motto, sea, country. You look at that, there's the sea, there's the country, there's the Spanish-style home that's on it, the native indigenous. So I think that that is our identity. The fact that there is so many different points and values in the city. We aren't at the ocean, we're not in the mountains, we are sea and country. So I think that causes us a, a problem identifying ourselves as one specific thing. So I, that's where I kind of have the, I love that we go from the kite hills where it's pine trees and looks like you're out in the middle of Big Bear or something. And then as you get further down to where I live, it's palm trees and Mediterranean style. So it kind of fits that to me that our seal, our city, sea, country. So that's how, I enjoy it.
Councilmember Genoway.
Sorry to put staff on the spot, but can you tell me what architectural style is Beacon Hill? If you know.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to quiz you.
I would say it's, it varies. It's some Tudor, some Cape Cod. You know, there's some elements of, I'm kind of trying to visualize different streets there. So I would say it certainly departs from a lot of, let's say. So when we talk about some of that 80s architecture, a lot of it is just value engineered, to be blunt. And so when we talk about like Tuscan, that's more of a bastardized style. It's stucco, it's red terracotta roof. And oftentimes it's, it can be, you may opt for that because it's cheaper than building, let's say, a traditional Spanish colonial where there's real attention to detail with ironwork, smooth trial finish. With Tuscan, it's a way to label something that oftentimes is more of an affordable option for a builder.
Yeah. I don't feel like I'm in Florence looking at these Tuscan styles.
So hopefully I'm not being too candid.
And to John's point, the styles that are articulated in the manual were meant to prevent that, that value engineering process. So they call for high-end materials and finishes, very authentic elements. And that's meant, again, to, in the absence of discretion, ensure high-quality design and not something that's a little more generic with a few foam details slapped on it.
And the reason I ask about Beacon Hill in particular is because as I'm thinking about this, with these architectural styles that we approve, we're essentially encouraging that style or we're encouraging builders to choose one of those styles. And I happen to like the colonial styles, the farmhouse. I don't actually like the modern, but that's just my preference. You don't have to agree with my preference, but, so I guess that's what I was just kind of thinking about is how to make the city look like I want it to look. And it's also interesting at the, what was it? The, the general plan open house we had. I think all of us had a chance to meet a gentleman who was the developer of Beacon Hill. And he had some interesting stories to tell us how it was named Beacon Hill. I guess one of their marketing guys had spent the weekend, previous weekend, well, they were going to call it Bear Brand West. Not a, not a fancy name. But I guess what their marketing guy had spent the previous weekend in Boston and saw Beacon Hill, it sounded nice. So they took out a map of Boston and just started picking out some of the places around Boston and named the streets in Beacon Hill based on what was on the map. I'll get off that segue. I think I had one more question. Oh, no, just a comment about our history in Laguna Niguel. To Jean's point about having very, various historical designations in town, that's the, that's the history of this area. Started as Native Americans, indigenous Indians, the Nigeli tribe of the Juanino Creek Indians. And then we had the Avila Ranch, that became the Molten Ranch. And I do like our motto or our, our seal, our, well, our sea country because we're not quite in the sea and we're not quite in the country, but it's got that great vibe of just kind of being home next to the sea. So, and I did also read that book by Ted Wells on Laguna Niguel. And in the 1950s, Laguna Niguel was advertised as a golfing community. And we only have one golf course now. Yeah. Okay, that's all I've got. Thanks for listening to my TED Talk.
Great. Any other comments? Are we going to think about styles and talk about it at our next meeting? Are we comfortable with that? Okay. We'll think about that. Okay. So I really like it. I do have a comment. I really appreciate at Planning Commission, it was mentioned about having wood tiles on your siding and wood roofs and removing that. So I appreciate that. That was a concern of mine as well. So thank you for that. So any other items? Okay, we will bring this forth. Item four on November 7th to hold a public hearing. Okay. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate all of our, letting us ask all these questions and appreciate all the input. And thank you very much for your presentations, Stephanie. We appreciate that. Seeing there is no other business, we are now adjourned at 5:43. Thank you. Have a nice evening, everyone.